Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Doc, do you have any pre-meeting announcements?
I do, Mr. Chair. Prior to the meeting, we've been informed that Mr. Bartlett, Mr. Lavin, Mr. Braun, and more recently, Mr. Koopman are unable to join us, but certainly they wish everyone well.
Thank you very much. Getting started, Secretary's report. Mr. Yezz.
Just let me check this real quick. Okay. Okay, um, I have the secretary's meeting minutes from the last full school committee meeting. I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Mr. Yezz, second by Mr. Finn. We'll do the... Yes, Doc?
Yeah, it's not a correction or an edit, but it's a sharing. The minutes, if I recall, I have it in front of me again, but did not indicate that Lana from the business office also joined Anthony Yezz and myself in the remote Grafton FinCon meeting. And so I at least want the school committee to be aware and the public to be aware that Lana called in remotely and offered assistance, if you will. So just an informational item. Sure enough, Anthony?
Yeah, she almost ran the show there for a few minutes.
Yeah, well, that's another reason for some acknowledgement of her contribution.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not really an edit, just an informational item. So go ahead with the motion, please.
Any other comments, discussion? Run roll call according to how the grid on my screen is laid out. That way I don't lose track of anybody. Chat?
Yes.
I say yes. Mr. Finn?
Yes.
Mr. Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Yezz?
Yes.
Mr. Adling? I think I heard, I saw him on mute, yes, he's on mute, so. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
I believe...
You got my...
There he is.
Yeah, it's a little tricky sometimes with the mute. I got caught a couple of times last month. All right, so the motion carries, minutes are accepted. Next item on the agenda, the treasurer's report. Ms. Oger is not on the meeting. Assistant treasurer.
I have not seen the report, so there it is.
There it is. It's available.
Okay, you all have it in front of you on the screen right now. I believe it is all correct. I make the motion that we accept it as written.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Ms. Mitchell. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, do the roll call. Chat?
Yes.
They say yes. Jerry?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. The treasurer's report is approved and accepted. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda. The fiscal year 2021 appointments.
There are written motions for these, Mr. Chairman.
Appointments, but I'll entertain first up the motion for district treasurer.
I'll make the motion, Joe. Do I need to read it?
No, we can go with the motion as prepared in item 4.1 and part of the minutes in meeting.
Excellent. I'll make the motion as reflected in the meeting agenda.
Motion made.
Second, chat.
And second. To appoint Barbara Oger as district treasurer. Questions, comments, discussion? Dr. Fitzpatrick, I mean, traditionally, we would ask her if she would accept the appointment, but she's not on the... She indicate any reason why she might not accept it?
No, to the best of my knowledge, she accepts and would welcome the support.
With that, we'll call for the motion. Chat?
Yes.
I say yes. Jerry?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Ms. Oger is appointed, subject to her final approval of that appointment. Thank you very much. Next item up is the recording secretary. I'll entertain that motion.
I make the motion that we appoint Amy Sutherland.
Second.
As written in item 4.2.
And I heard Paul second that. Is...
Yes.
Is Amy on the Millville side of this? I just don't have a video, so I wasn't sure if there was any reason why she might not accept.
Once again, no indication that she has reduced her interest in continuing to serve, and it's my understanding she would welcome your support.
Subject to her acceptance of it, the motion on the table is that we appoint Amy Sutherland as the school committee's recording secretary. Chat?
Yes.
I say yes. Jerry? Well, I'll come back to him, he's on mute.
Yes.
Oh, there's his yes. Paul?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ms. Sutherland is appointed as our recording secretary. Very much. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, we take great pride in the recognitions of each of our students, but in we make the special point of recognizing first the Valley Tech. And so while I would invite Anthony Steele as principal to offer additional comments, as the agenda indicates, Casey Galliette is the New England First Robotics Competition Dean's List and a champion semifinalist, which is a brand-new success level for us within that competition. Anthony, further comment?
Yeah, this is an extremely prestigious award by First Robotics. To Doc's comment, first time we've ever had a student go this far, and he's still in the running to continue on further. But a first in our team's history, our school's history, and just wanted to put an exclamation point on how difficult it is, the competition, the quality of students that are competing for this. Certainly very, very proud of Casey for this accomplishment. Another first for Valley Tech.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Casey. Great job. Any questions or comments on Casey Galliette's recognition? Hearing none, moving on. Dr. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, not only are our students recognized, but we have an outstanding staff, as I'm sure the school committee is fully aware. One of the more recent recognitions, which came in kind of a trifecta version, is Martha Pellegrino, who originally joined us through the partnership with Milford Hospital and state-supported money, subsequently gradually made the transition to become a member of our staff. And you can see the importance of nutrition, whether it's a COVID-19 environment or any, and the others. But we're convinced the success of our students and that wellness of our entire operation is driven by contributions with our nursing programs and people like Martha Pellegrino. She was recognized as the National School Nutrition Employee of the Year and recognized at the Northeast Regional, at the state, and the national level. And as I mentioned to Curtis before we started the program tonight, there are congratulatory messages coming in from all over the place, and we are conveying those to Martha. So another significant achievement by a member of our staff and a great credit to the level of competence and expertise that we work with every day. Remotely or traditionally, we work with them every day.
Hey, Doc, I'd just like to say Martha is on the line. I was trying to share the link, but I'm having some email difficulties myself for some reason. But, you know, working alongside of her for probably the past 18 years, you know, she's an outstanding contribution to the district, and the work she does on the wellness side and with students is really just unsurpassed. She's got a lot of credibility amongst her peers, and we're thrilled about the recognition that she...
You're right, Curtis. She's a gifted person, and she just contributes in so many different ways. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad we have her on our team and congratulate her on behalf of the school committee for all the recognition for the work she does. All right, moving on. Student Representatives, Logan?
Hi, everyone. So a couple of updates for you. First, Isabella could not join us. She had a work of urgency, and she was sad to miss it. For updates, first, we held our virtual Spirit Week in order to keep spreading positivity through this startup digital learning with our theme days being Mindful as Monday, TikTok Tuesday, Washing Hands Wednesday, Couchella Thursday, BBT Appreciation Friday. And we had a lot of participation both from students and specifically staff during the course of the week. We are also happy to report that Haley Moore Jr. in multimedia has been elected to the regional CDMAS board as our president. Haley will also serve on the state board, representing the region, as well as on our own board as a CDMAS liaison. And we are currently in the process of our e-board elections, which will be held virtually over the coming weeks with several new and updated positions for the upcoming school year. Do you guys have any questions?
If I may, Mr. Steele had mentioned the video that you had done. Can you talk a little more about it?
So I was reached out by Ms. Forge and my guidance counselor about putting together for the seniors a video highlighting each student and what their future plans are. So it's just, it's a really positive way of highlighting the students, and since we, a lot of things have changed throughout the school year. And I'm really happy with how it came out. I think we'll be releasing that tomorrow, maybe? Hopefully. Any other questions?
Any questions or comments for Logan?
Just a curiosity, if I may. Is there any way that we could keep tabs, Logan, on these kids as they leave and as they go into either working or into the academic field or whatever their chosen endeavor may be? Is there some way we can kind of keep tabs on that, how they did and where they ended up? And is that something that is a doable thing, you think, Doc or Logan? Do you think the kids would even wish to do that?
Honestly, I'm not sure. That's a... I feel like it'd be a very long process, and I think like reaching out to students and seeing where they end up. I don't, I don't know. It's not something I've thought about before.
It's such a unique situation with the COVID, that, and it's such a special class. In particular, I would like to, I would like to think that made everybody in the class stronger, and indeed, they went on to success. Regardless of what it may be, and that's, I was just curious to see if there's a way to maybe track some of that, just so we've had, we've had some... First time anybody's ever done remote learning, and I just wonder how the kids reacted to it and how they did. That's all. I just want to see if there's something we could do with it.
I think definitely, I'm also a class officer, so I think as like class officers, we're working towards, since we're necessarily not like spending all this time together, figuring out ways to stay connected within the next year or two, which is not something a class would usually do.
Correct. That's a good point. That's a good point.
So Logan's being a bit modest. The video is almost, what, 20 minutes long, Logan?
Yeah.
And it's scrolling of, you know, each of the members of the class, and they've made their own signs or unique way of displaying exactly what they're doing in the fall. Whereas some of them, actually many of them, are going directly to work, and they're holding up the, you know, the signs of who they're going to work for and with. So it's interesting. Logan, you've been introduced to a very age-old problem in education that's tracking graduates and what they do for the long term after they leave the school. So don't feel bad you couldn't answer that one on the fly. A lot of experts and professionals have tried to solve that nationally for years. But what you captured there in 20 minutes' time, basically 290, 80 of your classmates in a very nice display of what exactly they're going to do in the next coming months. Really well done. I can see where you used your skills. For those of you that don't know, Logan's quite skilled in video preparation and editing and things like that. You did a nice job there, buddy. And well, Doc and I actually spoke earlier this evening on again, the theme and the challenge, the ongoing challenge of tracking students after they leave. So something that as early as, well, about four o'clock today, Mr. Finn, Doc and I were discussing how we might go about that in this new, modern era here.
Yeah, interesting.
Just a couple of things. Mr. Steele and myself had the benefit of seeing this video. And when the school committee has an opportunity to do that, you will be quite pleased. It is a testament to the placement plans and the thoroughness, and it's also a great tribute to the young man that we lost, Tony, from Grafton. It was very well done, real classy, and we're eager to share it with the full school committee. Not tonight.
I appreciate that.
The only thing we're waiting on is for the website to be prepared. We obviously went to preview the video and everything before we went public with it, but we typically don't just dribble the things out. It would come with a full media launch, if you will, which would include linking it through all our social media sites, placing it on our website, particularly under the seniors section that we've been developing. So it's for good reason that we didn't just throw it out there. It's launched with some fanfare, if you will.
Thank you, Logan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Logan, for your hard work and the time spent on that and all the work you've done the past couple of years.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. You as well. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Johnson, welcome back.
Not yet.
And you're muted.
No, no, no. Joe, revisit that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm...
Number eight.
Number eight is Ms. Denise, not Curtis.
That's fine.
Sorry, Michelle.
That's all right. I was looking forward to hearing from Curtis. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So here, just to share the admissions update, which I believe was in your packet, and I can certainly share screen if you need me to, or if you want to just refer to the packet. Oh, there you go. You all have.
Yes, they have it.
Interesting. As we left on the 13th of March, and we were mid-admissions, meaning we hadn't finished our, obviously, our acceptance. We had indeed completed all of our interviews, so we were in a good place. And I have to give kudos to my assistant, Amare Colinaro, who keeps an access database with every application that comes into our building, every correspondence, every note. And thank God that we were able to have that and work remotely. We did finish up the admission process remotely, and with only about a four-day difference between last year and this year, so that was a huge effort. We had about 820 applications this year. We are currently sitting at 313 seats filled. Accepted a first round of just about 330. We had 43 declines in the first round and in second as well. We went out to a second round of 30, and now we sit at 313. We will go back out for another round as we watch admissions in the next month. We still have some seats to fill. So there will be indeed another round, probably the end of June. The reason that will be the end of the June is we do have some new applications and interviews for me to complete, and I'm preferring not to do that virtually because I think that it's not the same playing field as the other admission candidates. So it might be that there's a desk outside and six feet in between me and the other candidates, but we will finish up those interviews in order to fill some more seats before July. We did our normal round of admission, highlights, the breakfast that we normally have in September. We went out to some middle schools in October, November, not as many as in previous years, but as we go through this process, we're learning that the onsite visits at the middle schools are not as important as them coming to see us and touring us. We have more control when they're on our property, and we have more of an influence when they're on our property. So we really highly rely on those, and every single school came. In addition, we did, we did a private school and sort of homeschool tours session as well. We moved our open house earlier this year. Normally, it's the first weekend of December. We did it November 20th. Very successful. It was nice to do it before the holidays. We had a great turnout as a result. Our applications would due the end of January, and we did the interviews. So again, you can see here where we mailed out the first and second round. If you scroll, I don't know who has control of the board. If you scroll down, you can kind of get an idea here. This is what we're seeing for initial applications for what the interests are. And of course, I like to always show you the trends. And as you can see, our trends have sort of stayed the same. We've started to focus some of our work in the area of the hard trades, the construction, the plumbing, the electrical, and you can see that result in the applications. You can see the higher numbers in those hard trades. We always get a good representation in the engineering, health services, and multimedia. Those stay consistent. And culinary, and then we work on the others. So it gives you a cross-section of what we're looking at right now. The better selection we get at this point, the diversity that we get on our applications at this point, also help us come December when we do placement, because people will find a better home if it's, you know, if it's diverse coming in. I don't know who's at the board, but if you scroll back up, you can see the towns, and I know you have that in front of you as well. But you can also see the town trends. Pretty much stay consistent. There's some anomalies in there, depending on if there's a change of building, if there's a change of principle. Sometimes you see those kind of things change. So admissions in a nutshell. Questions?
Any questions for Michelle?
Next year will be interesting as we get through this COVID and we see what happens come fall. Our admissions and how we conduct recruiting could look a little different and creative. We'll just keep monitoring that and be as aggressive as we can be and creative to give opportunities to students to see our programs.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle?
Comment, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge that Michelle has done yet another masterful job with this. So remind everyone that she transitions into the role of vocational director, and because of her expertise with this, elected to keep this function part of her job. And you can see why. She does an excellent job with it. It's a very complex process that really spans the entire year. But then, you know, on top of that, managing it throughout the COVID shutdown period. Very, very glad to know that I have Michelle over there in our corner and couldn't be in better hands. I'll say it that way. And on top of that, I think if you were paying attention closely to the fine print there, we have 50 more applicants this year than the previous year. So the numbers and the interest continue to go up, and that, of course, makes the admissions process harder. But Michelle has just always been an ace with this and lucky to have her. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks.
Another demographic observation is there are fewer students in the district to be recruited. But it makes the increase even more significant.
No, I was just going to ask, Michelle, did you see, I mean, I know you ask, and people aren't obligated to answer, but when they're declining, what kind of reasonings are you seeing that maybe we can do for ourselves?
You know, we get a variety of them. Some are, you know, just staying, some accepted in multiple places. So I've seen private school, you know, they're playing us against a private school and then decide, even things like North Park Aggie and us competing. So I'm interested to see how it will play out long-term with this COVID. Kids, I hope kids don't get nervous and decide to stay in one place. You know, that changes so much. But we're doing a whole orientation series next week with our incoming freshmen. Actually, this is a great thing. We have a three-night series on June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and we're doing everything from intro to academics and vocational and how to, you know, what our handbook looks like. So we're hoping to get the parents nice and comfortable and excited about coming here. But it can, the declines can really vary. It can vary. Friends, friends play a big part. My friend's not going, or... But don't worry, we have 400 other people waiting to sit in that chair, so. And they want to be there, so I want those kids that want to be there.
Oh, no, I have no doubt that we're going to fill the seats and service kids you know that accept and that the ones that declined had any variety of reasons. But I wasn't sure if there was anything we could be doing differently to satisfy that, but as you said, there's a lot of factors that are beyond our control.
Actually, the 43 is less than we had. Last year, we had 60 declines when I was changing my report. So we've had less declines this year than we did.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments for Ms. Denise?
Just one question, if I may, Denise. Have you, have you seen any situations where that someone has called out a course that perhaps we do not carry at BBT that they chose to go to another school because of that course?
The only, the only case right now would be the veterinarian or animal or farming type, or I should say agricultural type things that North Park Aggie has.
How about cybersecurity? Anything on that at all? I had some parents...
Cybersecurity is included in our information technology curriculum. It's becoming more and more a part of it, including a including a certification on it. So that is part of our curriculum in the, I don't know if it's junior or senior year in our information technology program.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, moving on. Curtis, as I jumped the gun a little bit earlier, you're still on?
You're on mute, Kurt. I'm mute.
Let me try this. I'm on my phone, so can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So Doc wanted to just have me give you an update on where we stand with year one of the Math Skills Capital Grant. As y'all recall, that grant is worth just over $830,000. And we are, you know, in year one that carries us through June 30th, and the services that are contemplated under Phase 1, which is just over $200,000, is architect engineering services for the creation of a Chapter 74 biotech program and related laboratory space and related room, and then biotech chem laboratory that's going to serve the academic side. Just to draw your attention to where we're at in terms of procuring the architect engineering services, it's got a timeline sitting in front of you, beginning with May the 6th, when we did our initial postings. We had a walkthrough of the spaces on May the 11th for vendors attended. We had a question deadline period that extended through May the 18th, and proposals were due yesterday on the 20th. Our goal right now, we've got a selection committee made of myself, Jim Broschu, Matt Connors, Eddie Evans, and Lorna Mangano is also kind of shadowing in the process as well. We are to review the proposals, and there were five that were actually mailed into us, or I should say mailed into the district, and we should have those proposals thoroughly reviewed and ranked for tomorrow, meeting at 11:30. Uh, uh, meeting at eleven thirty. Um, our goal at that point would be to, to rank the top three in accordance with uh the guidelines under Mass uh General Law Chapter Seven. And uh, and then we negotiate a fee. So if I can have you look at the May twenty-eighth timeline there, you'll notice that we stated a fee in the proposal of seventy thousand dollars. We have a maximum grant amount of eighty, so we will need to stay within that parameter. Uh, we utilize the D C A M standardized rates for architect engineering services based on con- estimated construction costs as well as the complexity of the job. And we felt like seventy thousand dollars was a great starting point and fair. Uh, we do anticipate that we'll have to negotiate that obviously. Um, our timelines are pretty stringent. Um, and in this process, as you can see, as you move down, uh, some comments around that um were made certainly during the walkthrough and during the question period. Uh, but we do feel like it is feasible for us to hit the schedule. Uh, assuming all the dominoes get lined up and fall correctly. Uh, we know that we do stand to have to be flexible during this process. Uh, I do want to uh also point out, you'll notice at the top of the document that we do current have, currently have a school committee policy. Uh, it is titled S E B in terms of the selection of an architect. And I wanted to remind the committee, under Mass General Law, we are required to adopt uh standard model designer selection procedures. As within the prior project, we utilized the state's model designer selection procedures for this process to ensure compliance uh under the law. And, and as I pointed out, that is known as the designer selection law. This process that we're underway with right now is strictly qualifications based. No dollars are involved at this point. We're just here to evaluate whether or not we have competent uh engineers and architects uh for this job. Um, so we've come up with standardized criteria where we rate. Um, not with, using the point system, just merely most advantageous, advantageous or it just acceptable. Uh, and then we come through as a group and we start our ranking process at that point. Um, you'll notice that we did have a great turnout. We had thirty-two firms and construction journals that requested the RFQ. Um, now there were two construction journals and they're basically clearinghouses, so we don't really want to count those, but they get the information out to more people. Uh, the remaining thirty firms, we did find out that some were owners, project managers. So they were looking at that merely to determine whether or not we would be seeking services for that. So they, their goal wasn't to submit a proposal. So out of those that were actually uh architect firms that would be in the designer's uh selection phase of the project, we received five and they're uh there at the bottom of, of, of the document that I provided. Uh, we do anticipate because everything that happened with COVID, it took us off uh task with this project. So we do anticipate coming back to the committee for a um, us, an individual vote to award this contract. Um, so we just want to make everyone aware that that is going to happen fast. We hope that we can get this done by May twenty-eighth. Um, but uh depending on the length of time it takes to negotiate a contract, that could be pushed off a day or two and it could be, you know, either Friday or Monday when we might be calling a, a meeting. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll certainly entertain any questions, but that's just a quick update of where we stand with the project.
Questions for Curtis? Doc?
Yeah, Kurt, when you're talking about calling a meeting, uh, that's an attempt to alert the school committee that we might be asking them for a special meeting, not, not the designer selection group meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. It is, is to vote that contract. So sorry if that wasn't clear. Yeah.
No, okay. So there's a, there's a heads up with that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Curtis? Seeing none. Curtis, do you have any line items or donations?
We don't. That'll conclude. Uh, neither one of the two items. We will next month uh likely be coming to the school committee for some line item transfers. We're really trying to plan the final uh end of the year in, in accordance with uh special projects that we're trying to accomplish, understanding what's happened with the COVID crisis. Uh, and you know, uh dollars that uh ha- have not, will not be spent on things like transportation and in some cases, some utilities. Uh, so we're going back to determine any COVID related costs that we might need to cover that might not be covered by grants. Uh, and any other projects that have been cut from next year's budget. Um, or even costs that may have been budgeted that we anticipate we might have budget reductions uh to take those purchases on in the current year. So um, you know, just anticipate something next month. And that's it.
Much. Take care. Next item on the agenda, budget. Ms. Mitchell?
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
So um, right now the presentations continue mostly in Zoom fashion. Um, I'd like to ask Mr. Finn if he could share regarding the finance committee meeting from Millville.
Yeah, we, Doc and I both uh use the Zoom platform. We were able to uh go over the budget and uh I think obviously Millville was very pleased with the uh results and also with the uh, we have a less uh amounts of money this year that we're requesting because of less students than we have in the past. But the key message that we heard uh was uh from the finance chair and the vice chair who are concerned that uh because of the state's um acknowledgement of a five billion dollar shortfall, at least at last count. Um, they are concerned that there would be an additional comeback uh to the towns. Uh, renegotiating the amount of money that's necessary. And um, that was a, a big theme that carried through on a number of their questions. Um, Doc and I um handled that. Uh, Doc in particular gave an update as to what was happening from his vantage point in the state. And at the same timeframe, um arrested their fears relative to uh us coming back. Um, which is something we've not ever done at B V T, um saying uh that we would need um to relook at our budget and redo it. We gave them the budget that we believe to be right. If the changes need be made, uh we will make uh with internal of the budget and not go back to the towns. And the rationale behind that is Doc, um, I think really emphasized is that if indeed the state is having difficulty meeting its uh budget requirements, um, then it's going to be on all three hundred fifty-three cities and towns as well as all regional districts and schools districts. So uh we all have to chip in and you gotta, you gotta live with what you've said you're going to live with and you can't go back for a second bite at the apple. They were very pleased with that and I've heard from two of them uh saying that really put their mind at ease, at least on the B V T side of it. Uh, that, that we, that chance of us coming back would be, would be null. So um, that was the biggest message we got. Other than that, uh, the meeting went off without a hitch and I think they're very pleased with the budget request.
Excellent. Thank you, Jerry. I can honestly say that I have had um email communications with uh FinCom members from Sutton that have expressed similar concerns. And, and we, we pretty much have had the same conversation and um Dr. Fitzpatrick has, has reassured them that we will live within the budget that we have, have offered and will look at outside sources to uh fund unforeseen costs. Um, Dr. Fitzpatrick, could you talk about where we're at with the town meetings perhaps?
Absolutely. I'd like to thank uh both you and Jerry and of course all the school committee members for their assistance and uh, and more recently in their direct communications with the finance committees that are at the home level. Uh, and I thoroughly appreciate the preciseness truly of the communication you prepared uh for Pat Morris. Okay? I think it could, it uh hopefully addressed the concerns he had at that time. Uh, and we'll continue to communicate with people. Uh, we have a number of activities, uh, you know, conversations, uh, certainly with Anthony and Curtis and Lorna and myself. Uh, and more like the treasurer relative to uh strategies, uh, given the unpredictable scenarios that are likely to emerge at the state level. So um, we, we won't be blindsided uh and, and we're hoping to design something. And you can see from the proposals, we're even looking to make further changes uh in our facility using grant money and other money. So we're not dependent upon local dollars for, for, I can recall when we may i- introduce an engineering program by recruiting the Millville Finance Committee to help paint the room that we would use for the engineering program. So by hook or by crook, we continue to do that. The town meeting schedules as currently known are as follows. May twenty-sixth, Blackstone is committed, although they may hold it outside on the campus apparently. Uh, but it, it's still scheduled on the B M R campus on May twenty-sixth. Uh, and that's not supposed to change. On June first, Mendon is expected to conduct their meeting. On June eighteenth, Grafton is scheduled to conduct their meeting. Uh, if, uh, June seventeenth, if I skip that, Uxbridge is expected to conduct their meeting. June twenty-second, Bellingham, Millville and Sutton are all expected to conduct their meeting. June twenty-third, there are four town meeting scheduled, Hope Dale, Milbury, Northbridge and Upton. Milford uh just recently confirmed June twenty-ninth. Douglas has not confirmed. Uh, speaking with superintendents across the state, in a number of cases, their towns or cities are not willing to meet this fiscal year. So uh it, it's uh putting the one-twelfth budget plan in, in uh in motion, creating additional complications for everybody. Uh, but it looks like some cities and towns uh would prefer, unlike ours, and I hope we are able to address uh during this fiscal year and have at least nine, if not all, as we usually do, of our communities be supportive of our budget. It'd be, it'd be a big piece of the budget picture. Uh, communities and school systems that will wait till next fiscal year are anticipating they'll have a clearer picture of state revenues. Uh, good luck with that because I'm not so sure that the state will know a lot more in July, uh, or even August. Uh, given the, the way in which the state seems to be proceeding and analyzing, they've delayed tax receipts. Um, and so many other questions that they've introduced, the governor's plan is a phase in plan uh without commitments to dates and times, more data call uh developments, medical uh record keeping uh openings. Uh, so the other thing we're doing is we're um, the most recent communication I sent uh with Jim Ebling may have at this point, uh, the Uxbridge FinCom has set up a meeting. And traditionally they like a listing of the cost containment measures that are embedded in our budget. So they re- they receive that. Uh, and I'll do the same for, for at least Sutton. Okay, uh, listening as we get closer to that um date that Sutton has identified uh later this month. Might be a beginning of June, but it's on the calendar. Does that respond to that question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Um, Joe, that's all we have.
And I just have a quick question. Doc, how are we doing, you know, as it's budget related? Um, on our minimum spending, because I see that the state is not going to offer any relief since it is a statutory requirement.
Uh, we, we, we are fully cognizant of the need to, you know, uh, to recognize that obligation. Uh, and minimum spending also has an impact on what they call matching effort, uh, which drives federal grant support and, and even oftentimes uh other legal obligations uh under, you know, Title Nine and, and uh to, to, and others to ensure that you're continuing to, to be equitable and supportive. So, but we, 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 we recognize that uh, that hurdle uh in our plan.
Hey, Doc, I could add something to that as well. Uh, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. So uh in many instances, and we have this discussion at the state level, many systems are actually above net school spending. So we shouldn't have any issues with that. Um, but we will monitor it closely to ensure that we hit those numbers. Okay? I don't know if that's helpful, but just understand that we will be at net school spending.
I, I figured we would be okay. Um, nature of what the machinery and different things that we can acquire that we still need to spend, you know, that requires money to save on future capital expenses related to education. Is that fair? Is that some of the opportunities we have? Is that what we're taking advantage of?
Well, I would just say when you look at how our budget is constructed, we've got some certain items that are within net school spending and then your capital, retiring medical, um, that is outside of that. And also transportation that's not covered by state aid. And then there's that other column uh that is above and beyond the net school spending. So that's where any shortfalls that we have, if you want to call it that, would feed out of that column. So it shouldn't impact our ability to meet net school spending.
Joe, much for that, Curtis. Doc, do you have?
Uh, yeah, this, this is another explanation and rationale if, that could be provided to anyone who might raise issue as some have over the years. That's why we have the additional spending uh category. Uh, when the state, uh, which they've done, uh, ups the minimum obligation, uh, that caught some of our sister schools off guard, who, who are operating on bare minimum. Uh, we, we have the additional assessment, creates a little bit of a cushion, a little bit of flux when the state makes those changes. Uh, so that helps us to meet minimum and also addresses the expenses that we have. We've also indicated to people that unlike a K through twelve system, we can't pass off a lot of those expenses to the municipality, that we bear them and we include them. And therefore, you know, we, we, we take total responsibility for our total operation, whether it's plowing snow or any other aspect of it.
All right. Any other questions for the budget? Seeing none, hearing none. Next up, Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, start off tonight with eleven point one. It's a, an update for you on our distance learning. Uh, overall, uh, I'm extremely happy with how things are going um with our experience with it. Our teachers uh have, as usual, gone above and beyond and our students uh met them there. And um, we just hit a major milestone uh with the distance learning where the seniors uh finished up uh on the fifteenth. Uh, we're in the process now of doing all their final grades and calculations, things like that. Uh, very pleased to report that uh all seniors uh are graduating. They have met their expectations. As you know, uh, we were required uh by the state that the distance learning does indeed count. And so their assignments uh counted as complete or non-complete and then of course pass or uh fail on their courses. Uh, so there are no casualties uh from the distance learning experience and all of our seniors also have met competency determination and are cleared to graduate. Um, obviously, uh, we have the next steps with, with seniors would be checking them out. Uh, meaning they turn in all of their books and materials and likewise, uh, there's that exchange uh of items. Uh, that is uh more challenging than perhaps meets the, the eye. Uh, particularly when you can't bring them into the building. So we'll be having a couple of drive-through type sessions. Uh, two phases of it, uh, to exchange all those uh materials and things uh and give them uh the items that we owe them as well. Uh, and that's uh in the planning phases for the next couple of weeks. Of course, a, a huge question uh comes into play with graduation. And our plans uh were to uh have graduation on July eleventh. And we had three options for, for doing that. Uh, the first is that we actually have a reservation at Hanover Theater uh for July eleventh and some unknowns there as to how densely they'd be able to see patrons, if at all. Uh, in a second option, uh, we looked at uh on the same date, July eleventh, having graduation outside uh on our field like we used to do that, that many years ago. Uh, if that size grouping uh wasn't in, in accordance with the current uh governor's uh orders, if you will, then we looked at possibly doing uh July eleventh, but shop by shop. And having, it would be a, a day-long affair, uh, but bringing, bringing through smaller groups, if you will. Uh, if July eleventh doesn't work out, the families, the parents, the students made it very clear to us that they're not interested in a virtual experience, uh, a Zoom graduation, if you will. No matter how uh fancy we tried to make that, uh, they would much rather postpone until it is possible. Uh, and we, we would kind of go back to that same uh succession of, of a traditional graduation as we've had them. Uh, to looking at smaller groupings, uh, cluster, right down to the shop. Uh, but they really want to have an in-person thing. They also were um, not enamored at all with any type of drive-in, drive-through, drive-up, uh, any of the automobile-based uh experiences and they let us know this loud and clear. Uh, and frankly, it's their celebration. Um, where we look very much forward to celebrating with them, but. But it's important that, you know, we honor them in a way that that they feel is proper. So if July eleventh wasn't going to work, then we would look at postponing to a later date that would, even into the fall, if that needs needs to be the case. I understand that just tonight or this afternoon, a new piece of information was released that and Michael, I think you've talked about it firsthand, or at least I got it from Doc, but that the governor has declared no graduation type ceremonies of any sort in person until at least July nineteenth. So that obviously is later than the July eleventh we've been planning. So if that's the case, and and I will put an asterisk on this, that's the case right now today. As we as we get closer, and I had in my mind's eye that July first, if if it was a no go, then we would look at a postponement. So even with the news today that July nineteenth is the new, you know, hold off date for any kind of graduation type activity. We'll see if it stands. And as we get closer, we'll start coming up with some postponement dates. Two challenges in that, to have a graduation at the same time we're opening school would potentially be overwhelming if they overlapped at exactly the same time. As you know, a lot goes into both of those efforts by the entire staff. The other thing is if you postpone too far, we've been surveying staff and students as to what the latest possible date is they'd be comfortable postponing to, understanding that several are going into the military, they're going into the workforce, they're going off to college. I don't know if you're really winning if if you finally get to do the thing in person, but a third of your classmates aren't present. And so those, these are the kinds of questions and and issues that we're really working with our families and our students, the graduates, to find out what they want to do and how we can best honor them. But that's the current update on the seniors. Underclassmen grades nine through eleven are still in their final weeks of the trimester. And we was not not too far behind the seniors here, but the same process. Will they start to wind down? We'll start tabulating their grades and it is more likely with the underclassmen that we will do the checkout type procedure, that exchange of books and materials and equipment and so forth. We will more likely do that in the fall when we start back up again because it is extremely cumbersome to do that remotely and or with drive up type interactions. Makes much more sense to, if you will, start the next year by physically closing out the prior. We don't have that option with seniors. They're obviously going off to do other things. So we will work the seniors through in that fashion, but the underclassmen will likely be doing that type of closeout activity when we start up in the fall. Any questions on distance learning or or any of that ceremonial type stuff? Well, okay, we'll move on. The calendar, events and status. The senior calendar, you can also go to our website and find not only these calendars and things for the seniors, but also a lot of the other things that they've been doing. We had a parade for them last week. The ultimate goal and task was to give them their senior T shirt. But of course, we had the entire faculty lined around the back sides and back of the building doing their social distancing, of course. As the seniors drove through and they came through shop by shop in their cars, many of them with their parents. And not only did they get their their school or sorry, their their class T shirt, but they also got to see the staff and vice versa. It was very nice also that both the police chief and fire chief brought out their equipment and crews. And so we were fully flanked by the ladder trucks, the ambulances and the police cruisers, and they participated in the event as well. So that was a nice community activity by all. As you can see here, this basically walks this calendar that you have on the screen share, walks you through the last few days that we've had and also some of those plans coming up. If you do scroll down to the bottom of the document, you'll see it is spelled out some of the things that I was saying for the graduation options. Again, you you have this document, but it's also this and more is on the website under activities, and then you'll see senior activities and all of this is included there. Any questions on senior calendar? Michael?
Yeah. Joe and the committee members, one of the reasons we wanted to make certain this was shared with you and also made you aware about the website is we recognize that different parents and others make inquiries to you as you travel throughout to your communities. And so we we wanted to make certain that you had this information. As much as it also changes for us, we give you the best picture we can to help you with those questions as you, you know, witness them. Thank you.
As I've I've always said it, but I think I say it a lot now, I always remind people to stay limber because the the guidelines, the requirements are always evolving. I think you 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 guys experienced that as well, but particularly with the guidelines for schools, it's been a moving target and that's fine. We we always rise to any challenge we have. And that being said, once again, the staff and the students really did a phenomenal job with working with the best that we had and making the best situation out of it we've had. And, you know, we've received a lot of positive feedback from all sides, actually. I am aware that things are comparatively speaking, things are not going so nice and smooth and easy at other schools. So it's another point where I'm thankful to be a BBT and to be surrounded with the people that that we have on both sides of the desk. Moving on to superintendent's gourmet dinner. Wanted to make sure that it was clear to everyone that the event has not been canceled. Typically, in a lot of things these days, that's the default, as everybody just assumes things are canceled. It is not. It's a postponement. I will tell you that there is a huge interest in the students who have worked on this. Essentially, they were ninety five percent complete with the project. And that includes the students in painting and design who did all of the murals. That's obviously all the culinary students and, you know, the the whole integration effort. And what we're the students, as Chef Williams described, was the number one question they asked every single day was, what are we going to do about the dinner? And so what we've thoughtfully, with input from students, parents, the chefs, everyone, is that we will have this event when we can have it. Most likely going to be in the fall and most likely going to be a different subset of patrons than than perhaps normal. It could be an event for the students and the parents involved if we have to do a real small group. But, you know, one way or the other, they've done all the work. It's it's ready to go. And we're we're postponing this one, not canceling it until we get an agreeable date. Michael, I didn't feel you wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I wanted to assure Michelle that I've already negotiated the transferability or portability of the ability to serve wine at the new date. All right, we already have that in as a general person's understanding.
I believe this year was mostly rice wine, Doc, sake, as it was a Japanese theme. Not to get too technical.
I never get to pick that stuff.
Yeah. So that's an update on the dinner. I don't know when it's going to happen, but I can tell you it is going to happen. So that's where we stand on that one. The golf tournament is another story. That one is canceled. And that was with input also from the golf course who, geez, I would put them right up there with schools in terms of having interesting regulations in terms of their operation. Not only was there uncertainty with when we could schedule this in or have this, but the golf course themselves were had some trepidation as to what would be allowable and doable. And so with, you know, mutual agreement, we agreed that canceling the golf tournament was the wise option. So that is not going to happen this year. And we will, before we even made plans to book the date for next year, I think there was also some some, let me say, necessary worthwhile logical hesitation there to say, why don't we see how things play out? And this is again, coming from the golf courses as well, just due to the uncertainty of their operating procedures. And so, you know, we will play it by ear on that one, but no golf tournament this year. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on. I have an item here regarding the business technology program and looking for your support and some conversation on something that we have been contemplating for some time. And that would be the prospect of not bringing in a freshman cohort for the business technology shop. And I can tell you, give you several reasons why we have come to that conclusion. As you know, we have worked with many programs that have struggled in the past. Business tech is certainly struggling. That's an understatement. And there are some that we have found ways and solutions that we can turn things around. And there are others, and and this would be one of the cases where we have come to the the recommendation that we do a phase out or a slow close on business tech. And I will, you know, share some of that with you. You just looked at some charts earlier that indicated that there were, I believe we said, eleven students who those numbers that you were seeing on admissions, interested in the program over the the past three years, that's been typical, twelve, thirteen and eleven, going back over the last three years. However, what happens after exploratory is that the, you know, double digit number has turned into this year, for example, was a three. So only three students after exploratory that want to choose the program. And it has been low, single digit numbers in that sense. Not only that, but once the, once those students get going in the program, we will obviously wind up filling it with students who essentially didn't get their other choices. And we wind up with nearly a fifty percent or better request to switch out. So the students that are getting placed in there, even after spending some time in there, requests to to move to other vacancies, other shops. On the inverse of that, one student did ask to switch in. And so it's a an unusual scenario. Even if I, for example, compare it to auto collision, which kind of had the inverse, there were only two students or three students that indicated they were interested in collision before they came into Valley Tech. After exploratory, that number goes the opposite direction into double digit numbers. And I'll remind you, we designed the auto collision when we rebuilt it to have a student cohort of ten. And so it's they're ultimately landing where they're supposed to. The the difficulty also with business tech is that this trend has been going on despite us putting an insurgence of money in equipment and, you know, modifying curriculum. We went through the transition to management and entrepreneurship away from the, if you will, back from the days of office tech, when it was a lot of, you know, typing and accounting and things. So we greatly expanded the curriculum. And none of these things have managed to change student interest in either, you know, choosing the program or staying in the program. Some other issues that we've had is high instructor turnover. In the last four years, we've had six different instructors in the program. And it's a two person, two person shop. And some of the other programs where we've done turnarounds, the one thing that we certainly had to bank on was we had some outstanding instructors. There were other reasons that were at play there. We were able to fix them. So in in many ways, this program has been struggling. Few other things that that are worthwhile noting is that this is not a rapid closure of the program. What I'm recommending to you is that we stop taking freshmen into the program and that we would see through all of the students who are currently in it. The Department of Education has weighed in on this. They make, you know, periodic visits out to see us. It is something that we brought up and discussed. They're very much supportive of this move. And also quick to point out that most of the business technology programs have closed around the state. That this is not something that is unique to Valley Tech. It's actually been a trend statewide. It'd be for the same reasons that I've mentioned to you about student interest in in the program and staying in the program. The procedurals, if you will, are to notify the teacher involved. And we've had discussions with the teacher about this. And she's well aware of it and certainly, as she put it, could see the writing on the wall, knowing that the program was struggling to attract and retain students. The Chair of the Advisory Board was noticed notified and had the benefit of having conversation and discussion around it. She is also a graduate of the program, knows the program well from perhaps some better days, if you will. In talking with the Department of Education, as you know, there is a statewide effort to expand career technical education across the state. Business technology as a chapter seventy four program is somewhat on their radar as a program that they would like to see, if at all, a chapter seventy four program. They're also designing what they, for lack of a better term, chapter seventy four light. So it's not a full blown chapter seventy four, but it would be a career technical program that would be easily adapted to a comprehensive school setting. When you look at business technology, it is largely, if you will, a academic type setting, computer lab setting, if you will. Certainly does not require heavy industrial shop space, if you will. And they were more than supportive of, in fact, encouraging our notion that we would phase out our business tech program, perhaps in favor of something else that they see more appropriate for a career technical school. For example, biotechnology and those types of things where you would have significant lab space and equipment. So there's there's support, if you will, from DSC on down. I think sound logic by all those who have really put a lot into trying to turn this shop around. I understand, I actually share the frustration in that. But honestly, tell you that I think we would do better by seeing through these kids that are in it. So nobody's let down in that regard. And replacing the program or using the space within the program for something as much more high interest that we know that our students will sign up for and want to take and want to stay in. Yes, sir.
Anthony. Okay, one question. Is there, does that program, does that shop have any unique certification that the students get? Like, do they get like Microsoft Office certified or or anything like that?
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'll defer to Michelle Denise, she supervises the shop. She can speak much more detailed about it.
Yeah, co supervised with Matt Funters. They do get certifications through Microsoft in the area of where, you know, Microsoft Word and Excel access. Those are, those are certifications now. Most of our kids in the building could have go through that cert.
Okay, yeah, I was I was thinking that potentially a certification like that, even if we're eliminating the shop, maybe we can offer that certification in others, multimedia or something like that, just so that we still have that option for the kids.
Yeah, I think that some of the things that are happening, especially in the world of entrepreneurship, business management, the use of computers in all these various ways, I think you'll see more of that in the career enrichment portion because all.
Because all, that's really what we're discovering is that all of our students need those things. They want to be a, or they want to own their own restaurant, all of those, those skills are applicable. And so the small group that's getting it now, I think you'll see it in a bigger, bigger form through career enrichment. Some of the frustration they are doing it in both sides. And they, and that's frustrating too, because of getting it in, but they're getting it in career too. So we'll see some streamlining there.
Do you see that as being some of the reason why you see the lower subscription is that it's, I'm getting this anyways, why do I need to set the shop to get it a second time?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I was gonna say historically, this shop came about, and some funny history there is that when, when, when computers were new, right, we used to take typing in high school, right? When computers were new in 1983, when they, you know, put this shop into play, the computers were new. And so what was happening in computers and happening in software, that was new and getting those skills for the office. We were training skilled labor to go out. Well, our kids now are coming skilled from what they're doing, you know, kindergarten through eighth grade. They're, they're sometimes doing more than what we did. So they're already coming with those skills and I think it becomes less appealing when they go through exploratory. They've designed PowerPoint, they've designed marketing materials by the time they're in ninth grade. And I know it's strange, it's not something we did. It's almost a skill that every, every single employer needs now. So I think that that's, it's worked its way out.
And I can appreciate that because my sixth grader occasionally does a PowerPoint just for fun.
So I'd like to build on that, if I may. We responded to that. And really, that's when we went down the road of developing the program, morphing the program from the old office tech into more the business management and entrepreneurship and marketing. And so I said, okay, if, if, if you will, it's nothing special anymore. Everybody's working with Microsoft Office and doing PowerPoints. We built upon that, like we did with all of our programs. We really, you know, raised expectations, moved them into the modern era, if you will. So what ultimately business tech becomes is marketing, business and entrepreneurship. I think part of our problem with attracting students to it is that if you were, if you will, pre-business major or pre-marketing major or in entrepreneurship, largely an academic-based field, or all three of those fields, I think they're staying in their comprehensive schools and they're going to college and majoring in those things. In other words, I think in the, the evolution of it, it kind of evolved itself out of the appeal, if you will, of why you would go to a vogue school. I might just stay in my comprehensive high school and take a lot of accounting and math and things of that nature. And that's just my theory. I don't know that that's exactly the reason why. But I do know that if I was a youngster and really wanted to go down that path of pre-business or pre-entrepreneurship or what have you, I don't know that I would go over to Valley Tech to seek that out. I think I would probably stay in my academic setting with a lot more electives and options for things like accounting and marketing and so forth, just my theory. But I can tell you that it's been very difficult to market the program to our students and have them stay in the program, even when they do wind up getting in there.
Yeah, no, and Anthony, I know this is not a light decision. I know off, I know the business technology program has come up in conversations, though not to this level. So I know you guys have done everything possible to try and clear this up. But there are a couple of things, because I know other shops have limitations on how many kids can be in them. Will, so, but now we've basically taken 10 seats away from a shop. Are we going to have the capacity to be able to move those 10 kids into other shops? So our numbers and our enrollment stays the same with one less shop?
We're actually likely to, the goal anyways, to continue to gradually and slowly increase enrollment. So if you're asking me if it will hurt that process, no. I'm looking forward to, as we looked at the grant we just got of opening up biotechnology, I know that one's going to be easy to fill. No, no problem there. The demand for that is enormous. And we're also looking at some things that we've been talking about. For example, we're drafting, as you know, emerging drafting and engineering together. For analogy's sake or visual, you know, engineering is kind of eating drafting whole because they have a crossover. And so we were really thinking about it. And one interesting prospect is that, again, the conversation I had with our folks at the Department of Education, with very, very little procedures, if you will, we could make drafting a two-year program for upperclassmen. So it's a two-year program in other locations and it's something that they would entertain doing. So I'll give you, for example, if that's very agreeable with the Department of Education, rather than drafting going away, it would be nice to have a program where we could admit juniors and seniors. Right now, we don't transfer in juniors and seniors because they've missed too many hours of instruction. But if we had a two-year program, again, Chapter 74 approved, it could open up a whole new avenue for helping us refill some of the vacancies that we get up in the junior senior year. And, you know, those types of activities that would help us keep our enrollment up and sustain it, it's a whole new prospect. And, you know, I know that engineering is full. I wouldn't mind, for example, as we're phasing out business tech, moving drafting up into that space and starting a new two-year program for upperclassmen. Again, just some thoughts. But it's one, one very effective way that could solve an age-old problem that we had. And that's how do you transfer in upperclassmen? State loves it because we're increasing access. So you have some juniors and seniors that maybe didn't get in as freshmen and sophomores, but would have another crack at getting to come to the career technical school for the training. This, we're always thinking about these ideas and these options. One thing I can assure you is that the phasing out, slow phase out of business tech will not hurt those prospects of either serving the kids we have or the goal of ever trying to squeeze another kid in and get, get career technical education out to more people.
Mrs. Self, I may go back to Mr. Nice really quick, only because you had 11 kids cite this as their number one. And then they're going to show up in August and it's not going to be there. Are you planning on a communication about that?
So pending our communication with you tonight, we will be reaching out to the families and the students of those 11 children next week. And we would ask them to, we'll tell them what our plan is. And we'd give them opportunity to re-select shops at that time. So, and so we'll be communicating that well in advance. I'd like to have it done by next Friday.
And I, and part of that, I will admit, is I believe I know one of the students and his family that selected that as their number one. So the first thing I thought of was, how are they going to react? So that, you know, if we can.
Look at their second choice, a good majority of their second choices are in the multimedia field, very closely corresponding, especially if you like the marketing end of the business. So I was tracing that to see, you know, what, if there, if there was a pathway. And a couple of them also were IT students indicating their computer interest. So I can see them easily being happy with the other choices.
Doc, do you have, I was gonna say, Doc, do you have something you want to add to all this?
Yeah, you, you haven't missed the fact that this not, this is not listed as a vote item for the committee. The state has not indicated to us that it's necessary that the committee take a vote. We've just, in the typical and consistent approach of having the committee be informed and, you know, kind of bounce things off the committee, that's why we're sharing this. But we're not looking for a vote for this evening. In fact, we're not looking for a vote at all unless the state changes its position and expects us to ask you to do that.
Yes, no, and greatly appreciate that because as you imagine, you know, as you can imagine, if we happen to know a family and they get that communication and we get the call, having this information and having this conversation goes a long way towards, you know, supporting that public confidence and how we function and the business we do every day. So, so that adds to that. So you're not looking for a vote, you're not looking for any support? That was more of an FYI, stuff you're taking coming this fall.
Well, speaking uncertain for Anthony and Michelle, we always welcome your support, but we're just not requesting a formal vote.
Any other questions for me or Michelle on rationale or thought on that? We're happy to engage and share what we've been working on and trying and dealing with.
I, I know I can speak for myself. I have the confidence that this is not taken lightly. Although I wasn't part of the committee, I remember conversations about shops many years ago when other communities were closing them. We kept, I believe it was Machine Tech was one of the big ones. We kept it open at a time when everyone was closing and we made it work. And here we are as the leader in that area. So I know you do not take this decision lightly. Any other questions for Anthony and Michelle with regard to business tech?
Okay, I'll move down to 11.4 Faculty Appreciation Day. It was actually the whole week for teacher appreciation and nurse appreciation. We usually have a faculty meeting in person and do some nice celebration and nice things for our faculty. It was a tradition every year. This year, obviously, we weren't able to engage in that type of thing. But we did the next best thing. We had a Friday afternoon Zoom with them. And, you know, students as well did videos for the staff. It was, had all of the spirit that we typically would achieve at one of those type events. Just what it lacked in, in being there in person, we made up for, we created ways to convey the sentiments. We did share with them, as you've asked me in the past, as a school committee, to let their faculty know how much you appreciate what they do. Share with them several parent, similar type correspondences and sentiments that the parents have sent to us. And of course, the students themselves certainly made that clear in their own ways with videos and other things like that. So certainly, I will, I will say this, as we're appreciating our faculty and staff, morale is very good right now, the esprit de corps is high. You know, that's evident when, for example, we did the parade the other day. We got a great bunch of folks and the times are good. And again, don't take it for granted because reportedly, that is not, not everywhere. You know, and maybe not even the norm these days. But our folks are just really happy, happy, successful bunch. And it's nice to celebrate them and let them know. So we did that.
Thank you very much for that. Any other questions for Anthony? Seeing none. Thank you very much for all you do for the faculty. And like you said, you share their appreciation and very happy to see that the families are also supporting their efforts during these unusual times.
Thank you.
Looks like Joe's, Joe, I think Doc has something.
Doc.
Yeah, just to introduce the next section, as a special request of the Policy Subcommittee, it became evident at the last and first remote school committee meeting that we spent a considerable amount of time working through the wording of policies. So what the Policy Subcommittee requested and we complied was to provide the full school committee with a summary list of the changes, hopefully creating a more succinct, a more efficient process for the Subcommittee. And just reasonableness, so that they, they weren't expected to make an hour and a half presentation as part of the school committee, you know. So I just want to set that as a tone. I hope that's a fair way to introduce it, Chet.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that as we move forward with trying to find new, the new way of doing business going along. So Chet, next up, Policy Subcommittee.
All right, we've met for a couple of weeks back for a good over two hours on all these policies. And there had been some additional ones put forward since then. The first one is the Student Handbook, which you all received in one of those emails. And it's, it's very explanatory and it shows you exactly what the changes were and anything else. Are there any questions on the Student Handbook? Chet.
Questions I move that we accept that is written.
I've got the motion. Is there a second? Second, questions, comments, discussion, Doc?
For the benefit of the viewing public, okay, the, the Committee has received the complete documents to highlight the changes and has had an opportunity to review them personally at detail before tonight. So this is not something that's being ramrodded through in any way. It's just, you know, an efficient way of giving the school committee a homework assignment to be prepared to take the action which Mr. Hemretti is asking at this point.
Yes, we all receive these documents in advance so that we are ready and prepared to make a motion without reading through line items. So we got the motion in a second to accept the Student Handbook changes as presented by the Policy Subcommittee. Questions, comments, discussion? Being none, hearing none, all those, well, I'm sorry, I got a roll call. Chet?
Yes.
I say yes. Jerry?
Yes.
Anthony, yes?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe Broderick, you're on mute. You can raise your hand if you say yes. Jim?
Yes.
Hey, Joe, you're on mute, so I couldn't hear you. Did you see, yes or no on motion?
Go and hit the mute button. Okay. I'll give a thumbs up. That'll do it.
There we go. All right, motion carries. The Student Handbook is approved. Next up, the Practical Nursing Faculty Handbook. And I give Ms. Monks, you know, the credit, being very patient as we work through the agenda tonight, which I imagine is not as easy as it is when we're sitting in the three seasons.
Thank you.
Chet, from Ms. Monks?
You've all received them. Just to show you the size of these three handbooks that we've done, this is the amount of paper that we've gone through and took most of the two hours to accomplish. There are three different ones. I am assuming that you want to do them all individuals. Is that correct, Joe? Or you want to do it all at once?
For the Practical Nursing Handbook?
Yep.
It's listed as one item on the agenda. We can do them in.
There were several changes in this. Some were just changes in wording, some were policy changes. And Joanne, if you want to add anything to that, you're welcome to do so.
A lot of the changes were, like you had said, but some of the changes reflected the Board of Nursing new verbiage and requirements as outlined in the summary.
If there are no questions, I'll make the motion that we accept this policy.
Motion made?
Second.
Second.
And second, to accept the Nursing Program Handbook. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? So, Chet? No, no.
Yes.
Yes, Jerry?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe? Joe? Give me a thumbs up if you're in favor or thumbs down. All right, Jim?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Paul?
Yes, I thought you lost me.
No, you know what? The, the tiles all shifted. You got moved over to where Michelle Denise was earlier. Sorry about that.
He's a shifty character, that guy.
Oh. I thought, I feel much better now. Motion carries. Next item, Chad.
Again, uh, next one is the practical nursing facilities handbook. Again, there were many changes. Some of them were very technical. Some were just simple word changing and some were requirements. Joanne, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
The only handbook that we have for tonight is the faculty. We pulled back on the other one.
Okay, that's the second one is the faculty, yes.
Yeah, that was the one we were wanting, because that was the material we had.
Yes, yes. We pulled back to the next school committee on the other ones because of there was some financial aid, um, changes that we need to make in policy.
Sounds good.
So we'll present that next meeting.
Great, thank you. So actually, the next one we have on the agenda, Chad, is the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act.
So thank you very much. I'm gonna leave. I appreciate it. Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Monks.
Hi, Joanna.
Hi.
Emergency paid sick leave was done by Ralph Terry, our attorney and Marsha. Uh, this was strictly an in-house program, which was provided by, by the two of them to address certain things that we receive, perceive coming up because of the academic, the epidemic.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and second to accept the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. Doc, I, I was just gonna say, before we do that, I was just gonna make sure that we understood. Our lawyer's name is Mark Terry. Chad was showing his age a little bit. Ralph Terry?
Sorry.
Was a. What was, was?
Picture for the.
Yes. Doc, did you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just, I want to echo that. These next two policies are federal government directives. Uh, really not a lot of choice or latitude here. I would refer to them as newest developments associated with the COVID-19 pandemic impacting the Family Leave Act, uh, coverages. Uh, and, um, under what's now called the, uh, FFCRA subset of those policies. These are controversial. Uh, uh, you know, the, the, they're coming out of the federal government. The second one is even more controversial than the first one, but they're, they're kind of paired together. The second one. Sorry, do we have interference? Sorry, okay. So what I'm suggesting is that I, I recognize the controversy. The, the second policy that you're gonna take action on includes a two-thirds payout, which is the first time employees would be eligible for compensation in our system under FMLA. So it, it, they, they, um, the implementation of these policies directed from the federal government without options for us, um, could result in turmoil in lots of different settings. So they're not coming through with our full blessing, but we recognize the need to take the action that the policy subcommittee is recommending.
That motion was made and second, any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none? Chad?
Yes.
I say yes, Jerry?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe Broderick?
Joe Broderick, I have some comments.
Oh, all right, what do you got?
We have contract negotiations coming out and it's gonna make a definite difference, so. On how we're supposed to do it. And I'd like, uh, maybe me and Jerry and the Doc can get together with somebody of, some of these as we're moving forward. Because the contract's up this year, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we're gonna have a negotiation meeting some point shortly, I believe, Doc, to discuss some of the things that are going on, right?
That, that's on my list for later tonight. But okay, yes, yeah, Joe's on target.
All right, yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, so just as far as the, the policy as it's presented, Joe? The thumbs up or a thumbs down?
I'm in.
That's a yes. Paul? Paul, yes or no? Jim?
Yes. Yes, yes.
All right, motion carries. That policy is approved. Next one's the Paid, Paid Family Medical Leave Act.
Yeah.
Again, this was done by our attorney, Mr. Terry. Is that approved with you? He, he wrote this with Marsha and again, the doc had reiterated all of the changes that, uh, are facing us in the future. And I believe this one ends at the end of the, of the fiscal year this year. Is that another fiscal year of December 31st, 2020? Is that correct, Doc? This one is a temporary policy?
That is correct.
It expires at the end of the calendar year according to the policy.
That, that, and, that and the next one, yes. Good. The next one is also gonna be a temporary.
Right, so. And so as far as emergency FMLA, paid FMLA?
Yeah.
Do we accept this policy?
Motion made?
Second.
Motion made and second, questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none?
Joe, if I could. I'm sorry, just if I could. I, I was just curious, has anybody looked at the ramifications of what the cost may be for some of these things? And I know I'm asking, I'm asking for, and that's not as an absolute, but, um, some of these things make me a little itchy. And I guess there isn't a hell of a lot you can do about it because it's the feds. But, I mean, it, it seems like it's another passed off cost. Is that fair, Doc?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that I'm not really happy with it.
Yeah, but we don't know what that passed off cost is in terms of it.
It, it, it provides, the federal government has created, maybe in good faith, another option for a person to claim. And I mean, you, you know, you're fairly familiar with, say, WKMAN compensation, right? But this is another option, the person's claiming illness attributable to COVID-19 and then being able to go out and collect two-thirds of their pay, you know, kind of thing, which, you know, it's like, how many people can you have out?
Yeah.
At a time when money is critical for the people that, you know, to, to, to perform the educational and other services. It's, I, I don't see the subsidy from the federal government. You know, they, they've created another option without consideration for the cost impact. They're passing that off. And that's scary.
Another unfunded mandate that we're half to swallow.
Well, I, yeah.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Well, I, I guess we're all used to that, but boy, there's, you know, there's enough here. And I'm not gonna say anymore about it, except that it just kind of makes me itchy, that's all.
Yeah, it should be.
All right, so we had the, all right, so motion is on the table. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? I'll run down the roll call. Chad?
Yes.
I say yes, Jerry?
Yes, yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe Broderick?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hey, yes, screen froze. Jim?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. That policy is approved as well. All right, and then the next up is the vacation carryover, Chad.
Uh, Doc has proposed this, um, policy, which you all received that required, that allows our employees to take their vacation beyond the June 30th time to the, they have to use it by the end of December 2020, 31st. Is that correct, Doc?
That's correct. This, that's why I'm saying this is clearly a temporary, a one-year situation. I think it's sensitive to the COVID-19 complications. It would not be for instructional staff. They, they, they're, they're not in the vacation eligible mode. This is just your support people that are in this category. And I guess you could say administrative, non-collective bargaining staff.
Okay.
All right.
I make the motion that we accept the policy.
And I'll second it, Chad.
Thank you.
Motion made and second. Any additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? I'll go backwards, so we don't always put Chad on the spot like that. Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joe Broderick?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes, sir.
I will, yes, Chad?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. And I believe that completes the policy subcommittee report. Thank you very much, Chad. I know it's a lot of work in a short amount of time as we try to put in some stopgaps here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Uh, this is the chairman members of the committee, item 13. Uh, there is a detailed handout on this that lists, uh, by town, uh, remember town, the incredible success of the students who participated in the Skills USA competition. Um, and I, I certainly want to reinforce the, uh, the success of Jeff Koopman's, uh, school community member Jeff Koopman's daughter, Annika Koopman, who was elected Vice President, I believe, at the national level. Uh, by the way, that, that distinction was highlighted in our budget booklet uh, that was sent throughout the district to, uh, select persons and finance committee members and town managers and others. Uh, so we certainly recognize the incredible success. I know that young lady's disappointed she couldn't represent the state at the national level. And the students here who, uh, did so well, uh, were well positioned to compete, uh, along with our sports teams too, they were well positioned to compete, uh, season and an opportunity that ever surfaced. So, um, we, we, each of these students, their family has received a kind of congratulations from us, uh, relative to their accomplishment, so. And we, we publicly acknowledge the work of the advisors here, okay, uh, which, uh, which are listed, including Becky Corder, right, Robert Jordan and Kate Minugan, uh, who are three of another of the, the staff members that we think so highly of that, that were advisors in this process. Are any questions on that? Hearing none, moving on. The, generally, we give a report of different developments or training programs or seminars, conferences, things like that. Uh, and I'll give a summary. As you can see from this delineation, there were 33, not to make fun of Larry Bird, or, you know, or any Terry family. Uh, but anyway, that, they were, uh, these activities are kind of the new world for our administrative team members. Uh, and these are some of the ones that I participated since the last school committee. So these programs allow us to monitor new developments, new grant sources, new guidelines, uh, new regulatory activities. Uh, and, you know, um, in the UniBank situation, I reminded them they committed a $5,000 check to Valley Tech. We hadn't received the check. Now, uh, they promised the check would be sent. Uh, and so we picked up 5,000 just for that interaction. Um, so among the other things here, uh, we gained information on the new capital skills rounds, which with Curtis' help, we submitted another application there. Uh, the FEMA application, which again, with Lorna and Curtis took the lead on that, working and working with leadership team members to identify FEMA eligible expenses, uh, submitted an application there. Also, the applications under the CARES Act, uh, which is, you know, federal, and additional independent unsolicited applications, including one to, uh, the Patriots Foundation, which I submitted last week. So we're on the hunt, uh, as Julie likes to tell people, that constant pursuit of additional resources are all part of our plan to anticipate whatever might happen, uh, in the FY21 budget developments. Um, so I won't, I'll spare you the, the details of walking you through all of those. You know, any questions on that? The other thing we attempt to do is we, uh, share the developments and information we obtained from these various Zoom presentations, uh, to kind of the weekly, uh, leadership team meetings that, that Anthony coordinates. Uh, so there's a constant sharing, uh, and we get coverage. Somebody covers one, one message and they have the ability to, to brief others, which is, you know, just what you would expect in, in the professional sharing. So that summarizes that report. Is the chairman?
Any questions for Dr. Fitzpatrick? Seeing none, next item on the agenda, any new business? Does any member of the school committee have any new business to bring forward tonight? That's not on the agenda. Seeing none, Dr. Fitzpatrick, do you have anything new to bring forward?
Yeah, I, I mentioned earlier in the budget presentation that Julie oversaw that their upcoming meetings, I had a chance to explain this at the calendar. Uh, Mr. Ebling, I believe, has been made aware, but the Uxbridge FinCom remote presentation is Thursday, May 28th. I hope that's not a surprise to you. I plan to participate in that. Uh, invite you to join me if your schedule permits. And Julie, you also probably penciled on your calendar, the Sutton Finance Committee, uh, I think, public hearing is Tuesday, June 9th, okay? So, um, uh, other new business, uh, farmer and retired school community member Bob Snow, I think I made you aware, uh, his wife passed away. We can pay condolences for that loss. Uh, in typical fashion, uh, Bob sent in a check, I think, for a sizable check for a contribution to the school committee scholarship fund. And so we invite school community members to, to make, or consider make their, their annual contribution, uh, to the school, school committee scholarship fund. We, we have some money in that account. Uh, we're envisioning, uh, well, in fact, we're committed, uh, and we have the funds to do this. Uh, so any contributions would be replenishing the account going forward. We, we have informed the scholarship coordinator that the school committee will be awarding three $200 awards, which replicates that which was done last year, okay, to the graduating class. There are 298 students in that graduating class. Two other things and, and a new business, uh, I'd like to, to get some sense of what the committee would feel comfortable doing a traditional meeting going forward. We have, um, the, the next school committee meeting is scheduled for, uh, June 18th. There's the possibility of a special, uh, but I wonder whether or not we could do something within the distance, uh, guidelines, uh, whether we have it inside or outside the building, whether it's in the competition center and we're well spread out, uh, or some other form, but have a traditional meeting, um, and not do something remotely. If people are not comfortable with that, then, then we wouldn't do that. I do think it might be advantageous. Uh, as Joe Broderick brought out, uh, and it was, it's next thing on my list, is we do need to make some progress with the collective bargaining negotiations. Uh, I am among those who put the brakes on that. When the state, uh, found itself in, in the $5 billion, uh, potential loss of revenue, uh, or, or, you know, the deck got reshuffled and, uh, I think if any system that made commitments is trying to figure out whether or not they, uh, they ran themselves into a problem that they can't resolve and they're back at the table and impact bargaining. Our contract with the, with the collective bargaining staff runs out on June 30th. Uh, and we need to devise a plan, uh, you know, for, for a period of time, uh, anywhere from, you know, six months to one year to three years, uh, over the next cycle. So, um, I, I, I've intentionally held back, waiting to see if we could have a few more answers to this process. Uh, but in the absence of that, we still have to, you know, come up with a plan. So, uh, I, I want to, I think it would be easier to have a, an executive session if we met in a traditional manner, uh, given the, the confidentiality spirit and the success we've had in negotiating in the past. given the confidentiality spirit and the success we've had in negotiating in the past. And/or to call together the negotiation subcommittee, either remotely or in a traditional session, to formulate a plan of action between now and a fair opportunity to present some to the teachers. They also, you know, have some timetables built in for a period of time where they can share things unless they waive them with their membership for acceptance. But I thought it would be best to pause, but you can't pause forever on that. So I have two questions there, I need to take some collective decisions relative to negotiation subcommittee, and also whether or not the receptivity of comfort that we would explore our ability to have a traditional session within whatever rules are allowed in the timeframe.
Oh, the cool is out here, Dad.
Well, I mean, I don't have, I mean, I will be comfortable, hopefully by June 18th, to be able to start having some of these meetings. And even if it is under the social distancing guidelines with some precautions, to kind of start to move the ball back to normal, but I don't, you know, I don't pretend to speak for everybody and their concerns that they might have. What does everybody else think?
Go ahead, Anthony.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Said, "I'm comfortable today, I'm there."
I feel the same way, Doc, I think it's important that we do get together, even if it is distance. This is a three-year, potentially a three-year contract. It's something that I think I'd like to get the input from everybody on, and it's part of the negotiation subcommittee. We want everybody to participate in the process. I'd love to see it together on the June 18th, and/or if the negotiation subcommittee needs to come together prior or after we get some direction from that meeting, I'd be happy to go to either event, social distance notwithstanding.
I agree. I have no concerns with, at this point, I think it might be helpful to return to a little bit of normalcy. And I think we have the space to do it in a socially-distanced, appropriate manner.
Paul, I know you were trying to say something earlier.
I'm 100% in agreement with you, Joe. You know, again, the guidelines are gonna become less and less as we go further. And our numbers keep dropping, of course, but, I mean, we definitely need to bring this back to normalcy for sure.
Any other comments on that?
I just have a comment, Joe Broderick. We need to let the other side know as well what we're doing, and so if they can get together and figure out what they're doing too. I'm saying as far as the teachers' association.
Makes sense.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Suggestion might be that the negotiating committee meet after the regular meeting. So if the meeting was short enough that we could meet and discuss what we wanted to do at that time, it would save steps of coming together more than once.
That's a good point, that's a good point. Because our meetings start early enough, so we could possibly do that, and then have an opportunity to collect our thoughts after, that's a good point.
Keep in mind that Curtis has alerted you that there may be an emergency meeting as well, okay?
Yes.
Associated with the compliance of the, you know, major grant.
Yep.
So that might create another piggyback opportunity.
Yep.
Depending how that's helped.
Absolutely, all right, so I think the general consensus is, you know, trying to get us back to an in-person meeting as best we can based on the guidelines as presented in Phase 2, because that would be where we would be at that point in time. All right, any other questions, anything else, any other new business? Seeing none? Items for the good of the committee are in your packets, presented in its presented in its link form, I will, you know, I mean, I do want to come in, I mean, hopefully people are taking advantage of the electronic format a little bit. It is definitely a, you know, a little different, takes some getting used to, but we're definitely getting the information. A little bit, I know there's a little bit of different work on behalf of the, you know, Cheryl and the superintendent's team to get it ready as far as links are concerned, but having it available electronically definitely makes things a little easier sometimes, so...
I can't wait to get back to...
Depending on your definition of normal. All right, next school committee meeting, as we already discussed, June 18th. Seeing as we have completed the, you know, concluded our agenda, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and second, Doc?
Thank you very much.
I'll do the quick roll call. Chat?
Yes.
I say yes, Jerry?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Joe Broderick?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Absolutely.
We are adjourned, thank you very much for working us through this.